We appreciate all of you that are here this morning. If you will, stamp our indication. We ask Mr. Guy for the all to be sent out. Kind heavenly Father, we thank you this day for all that you've done for us with the many things that you've blessed us with. We ask Father today that you would condescend to where we are and make thyself manifest to us in a special way. For those that need you in a special way today, Father, we ask if you'd be in accordance with thy righteous will to attend them in their circumstances, for thou knowest what is best. We ask you, Father, to bless our land, our country, and leaders of our nation, those men that are here that serve in such an honorable way. We ask, Father, that you would bless those that grace and made it our duty to pray for the world over. Especially this day, oh Lord, we ask thy blessings and thy mercies and special graces on those who have lost their loved ones in the attacks that have taken place overnight. We could say this, oh Lord, in a wonderful way, you can constrain the wicked, and we would ask that you would do that this day if it could be in accordance with thy righteous and sovereign will. Lead God and direct us, accept our thanks, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please place flag. Attention. Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, PC. Please. Again, we appreciate all of you that are here this morning. We welcome you to our meeting. First item of business is to approve, few minutes from the last meeting, you received them, gentlemen, and the format has any change, needs to be made, if not, there's a motion to approve them as you receive them.
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Men in favor, they don't say aye. Anyone opposed, take your check. Thank you. Next item is road department. Name and subject, Mr. Brawls.
Good morning. Let's update you real quick on a few things. As usual, we're still doing a lot of pothole patching. That'll continue on, I think, probably for some time. We're also working on some roads that, as you know, we are reclaiming some of our paved roads that are deteriorated to the point that we can't maintain them as paved road anymore. We're actually working on some roads up just north of Byder and District One. We have about five different roads up there that we're gonna be reclaiming this summer. We're doing some prep work on those. We're going through and cleaning the ditches out, clipping the shoulders on them, picking that material up, and hauling it off in preparation to start the reclamation process. I hope maybe to get started on mid next week if weather allows. We started last week on our first round on our herb side application, and we really struggled because of the wind last week and struggling this week because of the rain. So this may be one of those years that it takes all summer long just to get around once with it. We hit these years occasionally where it's just a constant struggle, but we'll be moving along with that as much as we can when the weather allows. It's about all I have for you.
Mr. Brawls, any questions? Sorry.
One question. Was there any significant damage to the charred and gravel roads as a result of heavy rains over the weekend?
Apparently, last night in the lower unit of the county, they received some very heavy rain. We had two roads called in that were damaged. Some of them were not completely washed out or anything, but one guy that called in said that he got four inches of rain overnight. But we, District Two crew and a couple guys down there helping, they are repairing one road that was about half washed out, and this other one, I don't know the extent of the damage. It was not impossible, but it had received some damage. But other than that, we haven't got any more reports of anything.
Mr. Brawls, any other questions? Go ahead with the personnel.
All right. Well, I spoke a little too soon last week. I bragged a little bit about not being able to keep pace with the sheriff's department, but I have a resignation. Jason Clayton has resigned from the road department. His resignation was effective last Thursday, so I ask that you'd accept his resignation.
Thank you, Mr. Brawls. Any questions concerning the recommendation? If not, there's a motion we honor to request. Move your second.
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Men in favor, they don't say aye. Anyone opposed, take your check.
And with that, I would ask to post a position to replace him. Be a grade five position like normal.
Any question concerning the recommendation? If not, there's a motion we honor to request to post a position.
Move your second.
Motion second in discussion. Men in favor, they don't say aye. Thank you. Go ahead.
That's all I have for you.
Tom, go ahead and do the damage plan. You probably know it more than me.
This is one I'm thinking about. This is, I told some guys down there, I said, "This could only happen at the road department." I have investigated this, and I'll be honest with you, I can't, I can't explain how it happened or what caused it to happen. I have Donnie Hemson, he is, he works in the shop. He's our tire serviceman. Of course, he does not fix tires ten hours a day, four days a week, so he does some other things. He's kind of a groundskeeper at the road department. He does our mowing. For about the last three weeks during his spare time, I've had him weed eating around the fences, buildings, anywhere that we can't mow. I've had him cleaning up around it with a weed eater. We have an old gator down there that was impounded by the sheriff's department probably 25 years ago or more, but they carried it to the boneyard and they quit using it, and they gave it to us and said, "If you can use it, you know, you're welcome to it." So we put a chain on it, and we've been using it ever since around on the yard. And he was using that to haul his weed eater around and his gas and stuff like that, because he was going over the whole entire, about 25 acres down there. He was weed eating, you know, various places. He went up on the hill and parked it inside a tractor, got out and started weed eating and had been running the weed eater probably for 15 to 20 minutes, and it started rolling backwards and somehow managed to roll across the driveway going up the hill to the pipe yard. Went down the hill, it missed the brake room, the big old grill, charcoal grill out behind it, two trees, went between those, circled around a pile of rock and dirt, and then turned and went past two vehicles and turned and ran in Broadside into Jeff Mitchell's car, caved the door in on his car, basically towed his car, and there's not a scratch on the gator.
Don't flip that again, boy.
Yeah. Just like I said. I told him, I said, "You know, it'd be hard for me to get on that thing and drive it backwards and do everything that it did," but I tried to push this thing, and this thing is hard to push. So I don't know, Donnie, he was, of course, his chin just kind of, he tried to run it down and catch it, and he couldn't catch it. The guy that was up on the pipe yard fixing the little pipe blew his horn when he saw it rolling off, and Donnie threw the weed eater down and tried to catch it, but he couldn't. It's, I looked at the place where he parked it, where the other guy said it was parked at, and to me, it looks like if it had rolled, it would have rolled the other direction, but had it sat there for 15 or 20 minutes before it decided to roll. Donnie said the wind was blowing, and he felt like that's what happened. I'll just be honest with you, that's the only excuse that I see. Now, I did reprimand him because the parking brake was not working on it, and he had not told me the parking brake was not working, but I told him, I said, "Yeah, I would have done the same thing. I would have parked it there, because I wouldn't have felt there was any danger of it rolling off." But this is the one time I cannot figure out why or how this managed to happen. All the other incidents we've had, I mean, you could clearly see where somebody was suffering from cranial rectosis or something, there was a reason that you could explain how it happened, but this, it's beyond me.
I'd like the good Lord to say that.
I see why you asked him.
Yeah, that's right. I couldn't explain it exactly.
I had a feeling, I told a guy this morning, I said, "I got a feeling I'm gonna have to explain how that happened." I can't explain how it happened, I can tell you what happened. As far as how it came about, I don't have a clue.
That's enough.
This is about 375 feet from where it was parked, where it actually finally hit this car.
You don't have a surveillance camera?
No, we don't have one down there anymore.
I thought you had a rest.
I'd like to assume this thing in place.
Thank you for that.
All right.
Gentlemen, you hear the explanation. There's a motion we forward.
I'd like to be wide just to pay it around here.
No, I want them to hear it.
Our shirts carrying like a second.
This is true.
Motion second in discussion. Men in favor, they don't say aye. Anyone opposed, take your check. Thank you. Engineering award. Bid award, Mr. Luke.
Good morning.
Good morning, Lord.
Unfortunately, I will not be as entertaining as Mr. Brawls.
I'll come up.
I might make you interested. Last week, on Thursday, we opened bids for a bridge replacement project down on Canter of 212. It's the road off of 51 going towards the landfill, which we had this, an old one lane trust bridge there in place since 97, and due to some things having to low post it, we decided to construct a new bridge adjacent to this one, get it, be able to move traffic over, and then we'll close the other bridge. So basically, what this is, is a bid to construct some new abutments. We've already purchased a bridge from contact, just for a prefabricated steel trust bridge, similar to what we have, but much bigger. We've already purchased that, and they have constructed it, and they're holding it on their yard here in the other end of town. So this bid here is to construct the abutments and to install this prefabricated bridge, get it in place, and pour the deck on it. So we received two bids, one from Miller and Miller out of Huntsville, and one from Gillespie Construction out of Jasper. And Miller and Miller was the low bid at $331,868, and it would be my recommendation that we award this bid to Miller and Miller.
Please, Mr. Brawls.
Yeah, I'm well satisfied. I'm not well satisfied with price, but it's about what we anticipated, and the cost of the project is in line with what we initially proceeded with this, so I'd move, we accept the bid from Miller and Miller.
Your second. Motion second in discussion. Just for information, this is come from the tidbit money that has to be used in that area for that particular length of property. Any other in discussion? Men in favor, they don't say aye. Anyone opposed, take your check. Thank you. Go ahead with your speed and the rest.
What I'd like to do, we have an upcoming resurfacing project on Canter of 631 in Mentone. It's one that comes, starts at 117 next to Camp Skyline and goes to the Georgia Line. Part of what, of the project that we have to do is set a design speed for the project and based on the layout of the road and the terrain out there, we've set the design speed at 35 miles an hour. Now, this road is not currently posted outside of the limits of Mentone, so part of this project is within Mentone's town limits, and the rest of the course is now. Just to try to follow the law, I would like to pass a resolution officially setting this speed limit for the road at 35, since state law says if it's not posted and it's paved, it's 45. So to try to keep everything in line with the design of the project and what we're trying to do, I feel like this would be the best way to go ahead, officially set the speed limit at 35 to match the design speed. So that's, that's all that this is, is to just match the design for the project.
Please, Mr. Brawls.
That's right. This is, make this clear, this is part of a federal aid project, so majority of the money will be coming from the federal aid. Will be used for that road, will be federal aid money. I'd make the motion, we go ahead and set this speed limit at 35 miles per hour.
Your second. Motion. Motion second in discussion. Men in favor, they don't say aye. Anyone opposed, take your check. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Luke. Sheriff's Office personnel.
I'll say something. We don't have anything on personnel today. We've got one, but they didn't turn in a resignation yet, but I want to make a comment on the Phantom driver there. He said we could put it over there on the hill at the boneyard, whatever it is over there, what you call it. When we put something over there, it's a challenge. So it had run off a couple of times over there with us before we got rid of it. That is a true story, and it was stolen from some county and ended up here. They gave it to us brand new or whatever, but we used it for years, and so we didn't want to spend much money. When Tom called me, I said, "Yeah, just, you know, fixing or whatever." So I thought it was, they got it going. Anyway, before Jonathan starts on this, as far as inmate phones, I just want to commend him on all the work that he has done on this. He's been working for several months. I think we went through nearly 14 different companies, and then finally got down to seven, and then he got it down to three, but he's put in numerous hours on this. I mean, I've got some great employees over there with him and Michael, you know, and he's, he's really done an outstanding job on this. I know we didn't have a lot of time to go over all of it, but if you could see every penny that he broke it down to and then asked for other bids and this and that, it's really, it's really made a big difference, so I'm gonna let him go ahead and do that, because I talk too slow, so I'll let him. But I just want to commend him on what he's done.
Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. Blaine.
Thank you. I don't really know where to, where to start. It's kind of a, tie a lot to go over there, but, you know, it's, it's time for us to either renew our contract with an inmate telephone system, which is Telmate, which we've had over the last three years. Back in probably June, I started looking around and talking to some other counties and cities throughout the state and through contacts I met at the ACCA, who they were using, you know, what kind of product was it, you know, what kind of commissions were they making and things like that. So, and also whenever I started as the jail administrator, I started looking at all the contracts we had and contracts we didn't have, and thought it was always a good idea to have a good current contract. We had folks that were doing business with us that had been doing business with years that signed maybe a one-year contract, but it was, you know, five, six, seven years old. So when I started looking at our inmate telephone contract, I saw in there where it was a three-year contract, and unless you sent a letter, it would automatically renew one year for the next three years. So after talking with everybody that I had met since being the jail administrator, I thought it'd be a good idea to send them this letter and say, "We didn't want to automatically renew, that we wanted to basically bid it out, see what else was out there." And I had looked at some of the commissions over the course of the term of our contract that we had with Telmate, and it was significantly better than what it was before, the company that we had before. But that's all I knew in using them as a measuring stick to measure or to see kind of what else was out there. Between the inmate telephones, I mean, it's real simple. They get a telephone, then every time they use it, you know, they, they charge them to use the telephone, so many cents per minute. So there's probably not a nickel's worth of difference in all these different companies, but some of the services they provide and what they're actually charging the inmate to use telephones or charge an inmate for visitation is real important to us in that when folks are sitting in jail, you know, they don't have money coming in, you know, it's their moms and their dads or brothers, somebody's funding their accounts to make, make phone calls and whatnot. So I thought, well, if we could ever get that price down, you know, you know, it's not really our job to punish them while they're in jail, it's to take care of them while they're in jail. Either way, over the course of this time, I were looking at different companies, and the sheriff said, "We did ask for several bids, and we got a few back, and we looked over them and looked over what it was gonna cost the inmates if it were gonna change the commission that we were gonna get, and also the product and the software that we were gonna have to use." And also in all that, the, with a contract for inmate telephone system, it has to, our records management system and our jail management system all has to communicate with the telephone companies to let them know who's in jail, you know, because if it doesn't push the information over, nobody can schedule a visit, they can't make a telephone call, and all that. So that has to work and communicate together. We currently have Cisco as a provider for our records management and jail management. Those don't necessarily talk together, and that's, that's important as well, because when they enter a warrant in on the sheriff's side, that person may be in jail, and so whenever they enter that warrant, there should be an alert, "Hey, this person's in jail," or "This person has a civil paper against them," or whatever. It should do an alert. Anytime you punch in a name over there, if it's got any kind of records at all tied with a sheriff's office, it should say, "Hey." But it don't do that. It's an old system that was bought out years ago by competing companies, and basically they support it, but they don't have upgraded it. So we've had that for a number of years. So when I was talking with the inmate telephone companies and talking with companies about the jail management software and records management software, I thought, well, maybe we can get all this together. So I had gotten bids from a couple different companies that do just software for the jail, for the sheriff's office, and for dispatch. And I got bids on that, and I kept looking at them, and I thought, wow, that's, that's expensive, you know, we'll never be able to afford that. So when I was talking back with the inmate telephone companies, I was, well, what about technology grants? You guys offer this, you all help with that? I mean, and I've talked with other folks that say, you know, you've helped with this or that. So I took the best, what I felt like were the best three companies, and I asked them to do a best and final offer to include a technology grant, you know, they're choosing, an additional technology grant after that. So the three companies replied back, and they all gave us, you know, a guarantee for what commissions would be over the next three years, plus a technology grant to help us with the software that we desperately need for the jail and for the sheriff's office and, and records. So all that together and put together, I've got three bids, and there's one company that really stood out amongst those three. There's a significant increase in commission. There's a significant decrease in the amount that it's gonna cost inmates to visit and make telephone calls. So I think that's, that's gonna be a help for everyone involved with the jail and inmates. And I would like for the county to accept at least the, the offer and maybe move forward towards an agreement of some sort with them, and also with the records management system to go hand in hand with the inmate telephone system.
Gentlemen, you hear Mr. Blaine's statements, recommendations. You all have read some of this material, or maybe all I can, all I have. I'll give you opportunity to ask any questions that you might have, and you can clarify if there's something that I don't understand.
Chief Blaine, what was the name of the company that you recommended?
The company is NCIC, and what I didn't say a while ago was the technology grant that this company and the others had proposed a, at least a $50,000 technology grant, which would purchase and pay for the records management, jail management, and computer-aided dispatch for the sheriff's office. And again, that software is gonna really get us caught up with, with the times, you know, with everybody else around us and the capabilities that we'll have, you know, to get us right up to speed there.
I understood that right. That's upfront money, isn't that right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That has to be paid within 10 days of.
So telephone companies, in essence, paying for the software upgrades and also the system itself for as long as we utilize their telephone systems, isn't that right?
Yes. An additional, NCIC has proposed a $17,000 a year technology grant. We currently pay about that just for licenses and maintenance for the software that we do have now. That price is not gonna go up, so essentially, they're paying for those licenses and all for the, for as long as we have that company.
So the grant money you're attending from all this is pretty much gonna cover the expenses of?
The grant money will cover the records and jail management and the CAD, and also pay for the licenses, which will save the county the.
Yeah. Well, I see Mr. Blaine for all his work and coming up with this. I was, endless iris and, it sounds like an O'Brien's made.
Do it, I want you to tell us. I have one more question. The software program, if I understand correctly, is one that is utilized by a number of agencies throughout the state and should be one that, were the situation to arise, be readily transferable to another telephone company if necessary.
Yes, each of the telephone companies that have bid, even the others, they all work with Caliber, which is a company, or SmartCop. SmartCop has to push the information to the inmate telephone. It doesn't work in reverse, so that is something important, and it's something that happens every like two or three minutes with this, the software, but the bad benefit is that anytime an investigator or a deputy or, you know, corrections officer or dispatcher punches a name into the system, if we have anything pertaining to that person, whether it be a civil process, a protection order, a warrant, anything like that, then it will automatically alert them. And we've had some, you know, folks in jail, get out of jail, that have a civil paper over there, and when you're having to send a deputy out to their house to serve a civil paper, we couldn't just hand it to them, or they go out and serve a civil paper and the deputy not know, hey, they got a warrant on that person too, you know? So a lot of times, we go out and we serve a paper, and they have an active warrant on them with us, and we, you know, the night shift has to go back out there and serve that warrant. So it'll be helpful in those ways to, you know, so that, you know, anytime they punch that name in there, they're gonna have it. So if we have anything pertaining to that particular person, then everybody involved gonna be alerted to it.
Just for the record, what was the guaranteed commission for the next three years?
Yes, sir. The guaranteed commission is $85,000 a year.
$85,000 a year.
Well, I have added them all together. $339,000 over the next three years is what, what we would have through NCIC. Now, that is including the, the grants. And if I'm not mistaken, that's close to $150,000 more than what we're have made in the past years with.
But it's not gonna stay there. I mean, if it goes above that, they guaranteed so much a month, but if it goes above that, we'll receive that.
Well, I, you know, like the sheriff has said, and other commissioners, I commend you, Chief Blaine, for, I know this took a lot of work to look at, and what I'm seeing, it's gonna improve communication, which will, will, will help save money in the long run. You know, I think the initial information there on, on price that you had got us for that communication system was like $86,000, and this is, that would have been out of our pocket if you hadn't went forward with the grant, looking for the grants for this and asking them about the grants. And then the fees, $17,000 a year, you know, that it's, it's saving us on, on fees, this is a win-win for all around, and it's because of the hard work that you did to get, to get down there and really try to find a better solution to this, and I want to really appreciate, you know, what you've done, done to get this all together. And I, I'd say we make a motion that we move forward.
One last question. I'm agreeing with you, but what's potential installation time of this? How soon would, could it be operable?
Well, doing the two things, those are two, two big steps, and what I would suggest and what I'm recommending is that we first do the software, and that when we're, we're setting up the inmate telephone, like I said, the, the software is what pushes the information to, and I'm sure we'll have bugs to work out with either of them, it being new to us, and we're all gonna need training on it, and of course, all the bids I got and everything included training, but. But, um, so I'd rather work those bugs out of the information pushing and sharing first so that we're not getting the inmate telephone system in that's going to have to get information pushed from our old Cisco. And then while we're still working on figuring out and using the new inmate telephone system, change the, that records management and that pushing of information back to that. So I'd like to start with that first. And I had asked that, uh, the technology grants be paid within ten days of acceptance of the, uh, of the bid and so that we can move forward with that. And we're, we're looking at probably a couple, three months getting started.
So the next budget year, by the beginning of the next fiscal year, the system should be in position to be operable. But we have discussed the possibility, maybe the necessity of actually having a specified employee to assist people with this. So that particular item could be discussed through the budget process for the next fiscal year. Is that gist of the conversation?
Well, I'm, I'm hoping that with the ease of use and user friendliness of it, it's going to cut down on the amount of aid needed to schedule visits and whatnot. And there's, there's also apps and things that are available on smartphones and tablets now that's going to help folks that doesn't have home computers to schedule visits from remote areas. Uh, that will be helpful. Uh, we may wind up sometime later changing days of visitation. Um, you know, once folks get in there and get to using it to maybe cover some weekend time there and subtract a couple of days during the week that would, uh, um, help the lady that's working there in the front stay more focused on her work. You know, but again, you know, still keep a few days open during the, the week there for when they want to visit and are going to need help. We're certainly going to help them, uh, but those that are...
So you're working to make this a self-improving process?
Uh, that's what we're working towards. That's good.
Sheriff, my second.
Any other discussion, any other question? If there is none, then all in favor, like you don't say aye. Anyone post your objection, thank you. Is this Caliber safe to bid in some years? Was that included in yours?
Yes, sir.
Okay, there were two on hold, that's the reason I'm asking. Thank you, sir. Again, we appreciate your hard work. Uh, budget transferment, Sharp?
Before I get into that, I did want to thank Jonathan for all the hard work that he's put into this. I know that he's worked really hard on it. And that money goes into what we call a special jail fund, which is something we started really before we started into the, to the new jail. And, and it helps to divert extra cost out of the, out of the general fund. So, you know, I appreciate that, Jonathan. Uh, we've not had to transfer any monies to the sheriff or jail this year, other than vehicles. We bought the vehicles, uh, about two hundred and forty-four thousand. I think we got about seven vehicles and all the equipment to that that we transferred over. Uh, as far as the jail goes, the federal inmate revenues are up a little bit, like we talked about. And, and that's, that's helping a lot on that side. Uh, on the highway and traffic side, which is the sheriff patrol, we are short as of April thirtieth, forty-eight thousand. And part of that's going to be in repairs to old vehicles. That's, that's a lot of it. Uh, there's a little bit of additional overtime that we, above and beyond what we got budgeted and some of that company. And you're looking at, uh, that's a pretty small percentage compared to what the total budget is. So I, I would, at this time, ask the commission to probably transfer forty-eight thousand to the highway and traffic, the general fund.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any questions concerning the recommendation? If not, do your motion, honor your question.
So what?
Your second. Motion second and discussion. Means favorably, no saying aye. Anyone post your objection, thank you. For without them, the last item is the sales tax holiday. Uh, every year, Howard County anticipates a sales tax holiday to back-to-school, uh, items that there are no tax on. And it helps. It's not everything that's taxless, but it's back, certain back-to-school items. And we have to do this particular paperwork, a resolution, man ought to participate in that. Uh, and when you understand that, it's changed to some degree. The two thousand seventeen back-to-school sales tax holiday begins on Friday, July the twenty-first and ends at midnight on Sunday, July the twenty-third. Uh, so it has been a change in the date of that. But anyway, you gentlemen have had any packet, if you've had time to look it over. Uh, is there any question concerning that?
That had generally been that first weekend in August.
Right.
And they need a, they need a notification by June twenty-first. School's not quite out, but we have to...
Police, school starts about what, August the first?
It's, uh, it's not, I think it's...
Pretty close.
It's the first or second week of August. Yeah, it's pretty close.
Any other question? If not, then do your motion, we anticipate this holiday.
So moving...
Your second.
Second.
Motion second and discussion. Means favorably, no saying aye. Anyone post your objection, thank you. That concludes our agenda for today. Our next meeting will be here in the chambers on June thirteenth. Uh, we thank you for your presence today, your cooperation. Again, we thank every partner for their hard work. And we appreciate what you and you gentlemen around the table, thank you for what you do. Do your motion, your adjournment. Anything without objection, so on.